Close to have traffic.
Close to have traffic.
There's a little bit of parking. What they were.
Red light.
Coming out of a cable. They back up.
Coming out.
And then. Sometimes he's a dog.
It was cheap change. When they got.
It's five thirty, so we will call this meeting with Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission to order. Would you stand with me, please, and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Pam McNew.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams. Keith Buckles.
Here.
Do I have an approval for the reading of the May thirteen minutes?
Motion to approve.
I got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Three, planned agenda items. A, commercial site plan, applicant property owner Jacob Miller. Tax map zero twenty-five, parcel one eight-five on zero-zero. Located one-one-one seventy-nine, highway eleven east, C-one rural central district, district one. Mr. Miller here?
Yeah.
What you got going?
I'm keeping a retail store. I'm buying unsold items and customer return from major suppliers. Repair if needed and selling. Selling for discount price.
Jim?
This is just for a, an accessory structure. It's on the same parcel as the principal structure. It needs a setback. There's no additional parking or anything.
No need for drainage detention?
Nothing, no search. Small stores.
Where's the sack?
Top of the hill on the left before you get to the Justice Center.
I don't think it was in that building previously.
They'll live in work.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where Gerald Cole had the fence put around it?
No.
No. On northern.
Farther east.
On farther in toward the city, that Little M Market.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's just a small access revealing behind this, uh, the primary.
In that market. You're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Good to go. B, subdivision flat for three lots, applicant Chris Carter, property owner Nikki Osborne. Tax map zero eighty-four, parcel zero nine-five on zero-zero. Located three-three-three zero, North Trigonia Road, A-two rural residential district, and A-three developing agricultural district, district three. Mr. Carter, is he here?
What did we do on that last part?
We did a rezoning to create these, to actually allow this creation of this lot. That was just approved. So, I mean, it's three lot flat. Everything's in order with it.
So.
Y'all good?
Push it through, okay.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. C, subdivision flat for four lots to two lots, applicant three-D land surveying, property owner Eric Brown. Tax map zero twenty-one, parcel zero forty-two point zero-zero, zero forty-two point zero-one, and zero forty-six point zero-zero, and zero-zero-six point zero-zero, uh, dash zero-zero-nine point zero-zero. Located Lakeview Road, R-one suburban residential district, F-one floodway district, district six. Is there a representative of that company here?
Yes, sir. So, this one, what we're.
Are you Mr. Brown? Are you Eric Brown?
Uh, Dan Spaulding, pretty land surveying. The Browns aren't here.
Okay.
What we're actually doing on this one is we've got originally planted subdivision that's along the main street here. We're actually taking a couple of the lots and just combining them into one lot. The remainder of the survey is all larger than five acre tract, so we can plow on that portion of it.
Good to go, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. D, subdivision flat for eleven lots to two lots. Applicant Christopher Young, property owner Daniel Vance. Tax map zero-two-zero, D group E, parcel zero-zero-two point zero-zero, through zero-zero-five point zero-zero, and zero-zero-eight point zero-zero through zero-thirteen point zero-zero. And tax map zero-twenty-one, parcel zero-zero-six point zero-one, and tax map zero-twenty, parcel zero-one-two point zero-one. Located highway eleven east, C-two general commercial district, district two. Mr. Vance?
Actually, I'm Jacob Forster. I am the land surveyor with ETN Surveying, and we're here on behalf of Daniel Vance, the property owner. Um, he owns its eleven city lots and two acreage tracts, one of which is landlocked currently. And he, they have, all of this property has been on the same deed for forty-one years. He's just wanting to combine it all and divide it in two. Uh, one for his automotive restoration business and the other lot for future commercial purposes.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a move and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. You are welcome. E, subdivision flat for three lots to two lots, applicant Jay Willis, property owner Sally Sefton, trustee. Tax map zero-one-seven N, group C, parcel zero-zero-five point zero-zero through zero-zero-seven point zero-zero. Located at Wilkerson Road, A-three developing agricultural district, F-one floodplain dis, floodway district, district six. Mr. Wiggins?
Yes, I'm Jay Willis.
Jay Willis, I'm sorry.
Mr. and Mrs. Sefton are here as well. And essentially what we're doing is we have three lots that we just want to combine down to two. One has tough topo in the center. And it makes a lot more sense to turn around and combine them all.
Okay. Is it Jim?
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a move and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. F, subdivision flat for three lots to two lots, applicant property owner Jerome Wiggins. Tax map zero-five-six, parcel zero-zero-seven point zero-zero through zero-zero-nine point zero-zero. Located one-oh-three-four-five Lee Highway West, C-one rural central district, A-three developing agricultural district, district four. Mr. Wiggins?
Hello, I'm James here.
Okay.
Uh, we previously had this rezoned to A-three. It's still not in compliance with the fifty-foot right away, but we did have a twenty-five foot coming up on the eastern side there. And we combined two lots. One lot was landlocked. And one of the parcel lines went through the building. We changed that line. We moved it over in compliance with the accessory building set.
Y'all is in compliance?
Yeah, like you said, the main, and one of the reasons, it does affect three lots. There's some lot line adjustments, but you're actually dissolving a landlocked lot. And the other one, because it hasn't went through planning, it's been noted, it didn't have the fifty feet, but we're not creating a new lot. It already has a home on it, so it's taking a, making a better situation.
Make the motion with proof.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
G, rezoned request from A-two to A-three, applicant Benchmark Associates, property owner Miles Spencer. Tax map zero-one-seven, parcels zero-eight-nine point zero-zero, located two-zero-two-eight Wilkerson Road. A-two rural residential district, district six, approximately two point zero-three acres only. Mr. Spencer?
Um, I'm Benny Norman with Benchmark Associates. I'm representing Mr. Spencer. And Mr. Spencer has almost twelve acres that if it wasn't for, um, that easily with the current zoning, he could get four lots, which is all he's asking for is four lots. But in order to do that, because of the configuration of the properties with, um, the road running through the middle of the property, which he actually owns, the prescribed right away for the road right now, he's asking to rezone just the one parcel. It would be two acres in size. And part of this is he will be dedicating right away for the road, for Wilkinson Road. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address.
Okay, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you, ma'am.
H, rezoned request from A-one slash C-two to C-two, applicant Zeb Beeson, property owner Chad Swang. Tax map zero-zero-four, parcel zero-one-eight point zero-zero, located one-sixty-twenty El Camino Lane. A-one agricultural forest district, general commercial district, district five. Mr. Swang?
I'm Zeb Beeson. I'm representing.
You're Mr. Beeson, okay.
Yes. Um, basically, he's a, he's what the, rezoned to C-two due to all the development around it and to be consistent with the zoning with properties adjacent nearby. Um, we just replatted this, and I believe some of the properties are actually already in some commercial.
Yes, correct. There was some, there was some separate landlocked parcels that they absorbed within this re, replating. The front section of this parcel was already C-two. We're just trying to create it now to where the whole parcel is C-two.
Okay.
You're okay?
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. A, rezoned request from A-two to A-three, applicant property owner James Cornett. Tax map zero-zero-five, parcel zero-forty-four point zero-zero, located sixteen-thirty Matlock Road. A-two rural residential district, district five, approximately one acre only. Mr. Cornett?
Hey. Uh, it'd be more than, a little over an acre, I think, but, uh, it's, yeah, you've got it more crap right there. But the measurements, the down, uh, left side of it is, uh, property of Fred O'Henry's on three-sixty-five. And the road running is two-ninety-three. From there, the driveway will be two-seventy-four. And from the back of the property across to Henry's, only a hundred-and-fifty-seven feet. And, uh, my next door neighbor, he'll cross road from me is here, but explain. It's all out of him. His friend, uh, put a double wide there. I want to give it to her so she can put a double wide there.
We're complacent, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a move and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
You are welcome. J, rezoned request from A-one to A-three, applicant property owner Michael Jacobs. Tax map zero-sixty-seven, parcel zero-three-seven point zero-zero. Located four-eight-seven-nine Caldwell Ro, Road, A-one agriculture forestry district, district four, approximately two acres only. Mr. Jacobs?
We remeasured that, and we can't get two lots out of it. Both homes would end up on one of them either way you went. And so I like to have a rezone in an acre, and I like to have a year to remove the both homes. I've got a homeless person that was in the woods living in it now, and I'm trying to get him time to find a place to go. Uh, you know. And I need to make my son a deed for it, because his house is mine. And that's what happens, just to make an acre.
Okay. Jim, Jim?
I need, I need to clarify. So he was trying to create two.
I was trying to make.
Now you just want to create a.
Well, we've measured it, and from the road, I need three-hundred-and-sixty-five feet, because it's only a hundred-and-twenty feet wide. And it ends up in the backyard of my son's house, so it ain't gonna work. If you measure it from the other way, you know, you still got both homes on one lot, so.
So are you, how many lots are you trying to create? Just one? And how big will that lot be?
An acre.
So he's not trying to create two one-acre lots. Now he wants one, one acre approximately.
Yeah, they're not going to survey it, and we come up with the figures on it, and it, uh, either way it won't work. Both houses would end up on acre if we, if we split it two ways. If we have one same acre.
So, so more or less you're trying to get a one-acre lot out there for your son to separate his house off of this.
Yeah, and his house has been there for fifteen years, and I had your grandpa already in when I put it in.
You're good, but.
I would think the request, we just need to amend it to show that we're, we're doing a, uh, approximately one acre of A-three, uh, to create the, uh, new lot. And that would be fine.
I'll make a motion to approve this with, uh, what Jim just said.
One lot, one acre.
One acre.
I'll second.
Got a move and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. K, rezoned request from A-one to A-three, applicant Justin Black, property owner Mark Colick. Tax map zero-three-six-L, group B, parcel zero-zero-two point zero-zero, located seven-oh-six Gilbert Lane. A-one agriculture forestry district, district three. Mr. Colick?
I'm Mr. Black.
Mr. Black, okay.
So the goal is, is, uh, trying to relocate my family down here from Indiana. Um, got a couple there opportunities for myself, for my wife, and my kids. Um, and Robert Brown, who owns both of those properties, actually the five and the two right there, he's here, um, he.
Get my stepdad.
Yeah, I'm gonna stepdad on him. Um, he offered to give me, uh, one-point-two-nine acres of the top portion there. Um, and put a drive coming off, uh, there at Gilbert Lane going up. Um, the only issue that I think that we might run across is, uh, having a fifty-foot right away, and I was looking to see if we can maybe reduce that down to twenty-five foot and still be able to section those off to have one acre parcel on the lower side and the one-point-two-nine on the upper side.
He's complacent.
Well, as far as rezoning, uh, I don't think it's out of the, uh, out of anything that, that's in this area. I would think rezoning wise, it will be adequate. Maybe the biggest challenge he would have is if he can actually subdivide it, which it's not what we're addressing today. So if you do make a motion to approve this, I would approve the rezoning request, depending he actually be able to survey it. If it's not being able to be divided, then it would revert back to his current zone.
Why wouldn't it be able to be divided? Is it because the ingress, ingress on the side, the flag?
What he, what he stated now is he's required because it's less than five acres, he needs fifty feet of road for us. And he may not be able to attain that. Uh, but I don't know if that's just because you need to get a survey out.
It's in the, it's in the process of being surveyed now. Um, they came out one day, um, they pulled all the main specs. It was actually three D. Um, they came out and pulled all the main specs. The issue is, um, so where that, where the house is, there's a garage next to it. Uh, and that garage is roughly, just kind of a rough number, it's somewhere between like fifty-five to sixty. And he was saying we would need, definitely need sixty in order to have the ten foot off of, uh, the property line. So I was looking back at the seven-thirty property there on, on the left side. That's a one acre plot there, and the drive coming down the side there, that's a twenty-five foot even there, and it's basic, it's not a shared drive because the property owner, right below it, owns his section of it, and then Mr. Brown goes up at twenty-five foot at the rest.
When he goes to plant it, he will.
So that would be a variance at a separate, that A-Z-A.
He would have to receive a variance to A-Z-A to create that. Um, his surveyor, I'm sure, will look at all the options.
Yeah.
And, and see if he can make this happen. Again, if right now we're dealing with rezoning, so it's your preference to say, yeah, this looks like it's requestable. We'll move it forward, maybe just putting that caveat that it will revert back if it cannot be subdivided.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. L, administrative review for site plan concept, applicant property owner Andrew Brackett. Tax map zero-sixty-eight, parcel zero-one-zero point zero-zero. Located Wade Road East, C-two, general commercial district, district four. Mr. Brackett?
Hey, I'm, uh, so the idea for the property is, uh, we've been in, well, that's been in tree business for nearly thirty years and started using, uh, wood yips into making mulch, but got the idea of doing that to, uh, sort of like a, uh, retail lot for nursery items and landscape material. Uh, just everything and all the lines.
Do you want a road either from Wade Road or Highway seventy-two?
Preferably, I, I would prefer Wade, just because of the, all the complications of everything coming off seventy-two. Uh, we, we've looked in it with the TBA review and DOT and all that. It just seems like it'd be a lot more complication, definitely a lot more cost.
Yeah. It's pretty steep over there, too, it looks like.
It's very steep, and where the guardrail comes in, you're, you have to excavate into the bank right there by like the, the TBA, uh, pirate lines. So I think that would be an issue for sure.
Is this next door to the church?
It is right between two of them.
Yeah, Wade Road's real, I mean, I, I drove through there. It's, I mean, it's a real narrow road.
Is Wade Road paved now?
Yeah, it's paved. It's real narrow. So there's a blind curve, or a blind hill. I mean, I, it's on the bottom of the, is this at the bottom of the hill?
I'd like to bring in the driveway down at the bottom of the hill where, uh, the, the, whatever part that would be of the road that comes in from the red brick church. There's a big tree on the corner, and it allows for, uh, Tom here is the one that took care of all my survey, surveying work and whatnot, but, uh, do you remember roughly how many, how many feet of view?
Yeah, we did, we did a site, pardon me. I was, I had a problem with low ground pressure of our weakness. Give me a hard time. We did a site distance study, and there's a little over four-hundred feet of site distance, which according to ocean, that's, that's good for forty-five miles an hour. That hill is not safe. It's speed faster than forty-five miles an hour regardless of what's. So it's only, it's, it's good enough for what we're going to. What's a four-hundred feet? That's a site distance.
Yeah, the, the.
How far is it from where you come out on Wade Road? How far you, where does Wade Road come out?
Right there, if you see where, uh.
Pass this around. I have one.
Would you come out by the Lutheran Church?
The other one.
Or Fort Creek? The other end.
Yeah.
So this property is between Fort Creek Church and the Lutheran Church.
Well, I'm asking is, where's Wade Road? Where does this Wade Road go to? Where's it come out?
It can come out on seventy-two or on.
Well, how far is it from where you're coming out on Wade Road to seventy-two? Out of my mind. Well, I passed the Lutheran Church. I don't know where Lutheran Church is at. How far is it?
I'm sitting.
It's, it's really.
Three tenths of a mile on this one lane road? It's too light.
It's, it's hard to light. It's hard to light. I don't know.
So, Mr. Trevor, if I can.
It's all local village, pretty much. I mean, that road's no place wide as in.
If you, if you gain an access from the seventy-two side, what's the distance to the intersection, and does it meet the T-dot requirement?
It's way away. It's, it's not a problem.
Okay.
The problem, the problem with the seventy-two is, is the cost of CD items. It's about ten thousand, eleven thousand dollar worth of items that CD requires due to the fact he's not, we're working on their right away.
And I think, too, in, in your profession, I would assume that you're going to use like a commercial type truck or trailer or dump trucks or, so, you know, my concern would be Wade Road's always been one of those roads that we've always tried to be very cautious as far as a safety hazard of putting commercial type trucks or commercial business on Wade. The easy answer would be seventy-two. State highway rated for commercial business, commercial traffic. So, you know, I just ask what kind of, what kind of vehicles are you going to run on Wade?
I'd say your, your standard would be like small dump trucks with your typical pickup truck with a trailer of guys that come and buy mulch or plants and stuff of that nature.
And of course, those incur trailers, and if, do we know what the measurement is on Wade Road?
I don't know what the width is.
Is there a warning? It's right there.
I'm sorry. I'd just be worried about the concern of the safety of commercial vehicles.
I didn't measure it. If, if I were measured, I wouldn't have guessed it twenty feet. It's, it's, it's as close to one lane as you can get. You gotta slow down.
Is there more?
If he's going past.
Is there more?
No, there is no lines on the road. We had, we have received, you know, some concerns about access. This is one of those problems where you've got a commercial property with an access on a small county road, and then you have access on a state highway, which I can only assume it was, don't know when it was on C-two, but the whole premise I would assume behind that thought was it's on a state highway, and that's where you would kind of expect your access to come from.
I think you have the benefit, a lot of people that come before the commission don't have that state factor there. You at least have that as a backup plan to where if you don't touch the county road, it doesn't tank your project. It just means, hey, you kind of need with the type of business you're trying to run. My opinion would be let's touch the state highway, so that way you're not hindering. You don't have to worry about that accident long term. You may have an accident on seventy-two, but you're, you're decreasing your chances.
Yeah, that was kind of my concern, just like the, coming from the Teleco Village entrance down that way, that curve kind of makes me nervous as far as for people slowing down and that, but, you know, it's.
When you get off seventy-two, you're right on your property, aren't you?
Uh, well, no.
I mean, that joint seventy-two.
Yeah, I've got to, when I get off seventy-two, I have to pass by one of the two churches to get over to it.
I'm gonna say this, T-DAC agreed to accept both plans and review it simultaneously, with the only difference being the access. So if we could get an approval of either plan, we would.
So you, are we voting on the plan or?
We're not, uh, at this time, we don't have the full site plan submitted.
We're gonna, we're gonna get approval for access.
They, they're just wanting, their hopes was to access off Wade Road. But they, they wanted to let y'all hear their case and then make a determination whether they're going to have to come off Wade Road or Highway seventy-two.
I think life safety, if I was in your, in your shoes and going to be in your business, I'd want the, the peacefulness of knowing I touched the state highway.
If seventy-two is gonna be, it'll be.
But no, that's only my opinion, not, not.
I agree.
Not opinion.
I think it'd help your business if you come off seventy-two.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think you, you go in that Wade Road exit, too, you, you may be looking at lawsuits down the road.
You need a.
If accidents take place.
I would just go ahead and reiterate that the board, uh, uh, based on the review for access, y'all recommend, uh, access off Highway seventy-two.
I'll make a motion to approve this with access off Highway seventy-two.
Got a second?
That we're not approving the plan.
This will come back with the access off seventy-two and the details later.
I think it's safer for you. Long, longevity, I think you.
You, you submit a site plan, we wasn't, we don't have, I don't want to get into all we may or may not think. We're reviewing it to see where the access is even going. We have to see what we got, you know, even on the plan, we'll may have noted you shown right on access. Which is in the system, maybe more. So there's some things we need to discuss.
Where, where the family, all the family?
Yes, sir, by our regulations. But those things we need to discuss. Be happy to.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We recommend seventy-two.
Thank you.
H. Commercial site plan, Affleck, Ryan Pierce, property owner Loudoun County Board of Education, Greenback High School. Tax map zero seventy, parcel one seven eight one zero zero, A-one Agriculture Forestry District, District Three. Mr. Pierce.
Yes, this was the football stadium, so, yeah, basically what we're allowed to do is, moving the football field ten yards to the right-hand side of the page, tear down the existing bleachers, put new pre-engineered bleachers back, replace the lights, and the football field will be turned.
Move to three.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, time out here, time out.
Any discussion?
I thought we was moving the football field to the old school.
We're still, we're, I got the survey yesterday, we're looking at to see if it'll fit, whether or not we can make it work cost-wise within the budget.
Why we don't, don't miss that? If you're, if you're, we're still looking at something, why are we voting on something?
Well, we've, we've. Hang on a minute, I was in and.
It's completely different what we've been told. Am I right? Am I telling him wrong, Dan or Gary?
It's, no, I, I know we talked about moving that football field to the.
That's what I say, that's what we talked about, but then he comes in and says what we're talking about originally, so what are we talking about?
Well.
I don't mean it's the football field.
If we, if we can't make it work within the dollars that we have, this is what we're doing. So it'll be a whole.
Can't, can't, and if is two big words. Before us, it looks to me like you need to decide what you're going to do and then come back to us, that's my opinion.
And we submitted this the other option one on the table. I'll do whatever, if we need to postpone this one or take the.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just stating my opinion, I mean, we, we was told originally what he said, what was going to happen. And then we was told that they're going to completely scrap that and they're going to put it in the old, old school property because it would be cheaper to do that than deter the old field down and make the new one. And now we're going back, so which is which? And you're saying you don't know, you're going to study it.
Yes, that is correct.
That's, that's my problem.
Isn't there a, a gymnasium tied in with this?
Well, it's a different item because of the way it come in. It's, it's on a different parcel, so, yes, we'll be getting to that next, we will.
I ain't got no problem with it, boys, I'm tickled to death, but I'm just saying, we heard one thing and now we're hearing something else, and then we're hearing if, maybe can.
Jim, let me clarify this for the record, if they don't build on this site, this approval just dies within twelve months. He would have to come for the approval on the opposite side.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they, if we approved the site plan and they built it out of quarterly good, if they changed their site plan, then they're going to need to resubmit, come back through. They're going to come back, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm good anyway, I'm staying good, my motion, I understand the deal, pleasure the board.
Are you making a motion?
Already have.
Okay.
I think you have a motion in second.
Yeah, I got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Pose nay.
Maybe we asked who the second was.
Thank you.
Okay. What we got to do now?
Just fill the gym.
Okay, Mr. Pierce is up here again. Here's my gymnasium. Commercial site plan, Affleck, Ryan Pierce, property owner Loudoun County Board of Education, tax map zero seven, parcel one sixty-three point zero zero, A-one Agriculture Forestry District, District Three. This is the gymnasium that we're.
This is the gym, this is the auxiliary gym, correct.
Middle school and lower grades.
I make a motion to approve it. So back there in life, you was lying to us like dogs, is what you're doing.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Pose nay, there you are, Mr. Pierce. County Commission Action on Planning Commission Recommendations.
Uh, I follow the recommendations of the planning commission.
Code Department Building and City Assembly for May.
Nothing additional, Dan.
Additional public comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pat Hunter, and thank you, Mr. Brooks, for having some good common sense. We've been told stories, we've been told it's not going to be on, or it's going to be on the, um, actual site, then we're told it's going to be moved to the other, uh, where the old building was, and it makes a difference because if it's put on the old site, that means that the students that have to travel all the way to Loudoun to use the track would have access to a track. That's a big difference, and, um, I think when we're talking about a project that benefits the community, um, that should be taken into accord also. But the fact that the stories change, um, that's very disturbing considering that we have already allocated or approved a hundred and ten million dollar bond issue and a big property tax, and it would be nice to have some decisive plans after all this time of what they're going to do. The school board needs to get their act together, thank you.
I agree with.
It's like you said.
Not only agree with nothing.
There's a big dairy square here in wine, something that's pretty well. Update for the planning department?
Uh, nothing additional, Dan.
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'm moved.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.
What, that one, what was it told, Gary? I was told that we're scraping, we're moving ten yards, we're moving, we're moving to a new place because we can do it cheaper. And we can put a tractor in, we was told we couldn't put a tractor in. So what are they going to do? He was talking for it, if he don't tell, he didn't say that, he said, no, no, we're moving ten yards.
Microphones are on.
You ready? Need to call the Loudoun County Board of Education, made in order, and road call.
I'm sorry. Rob Wright?
Here.
Jim Brooks?
Here.
John Nate here?
Here.
Leon Shields?
Here.
Mike Waller?
Here.
Everybody that's going to speak in this meeting, need to stand, raise your right hand, repeat after me. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may give in the cause is now pending before the commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and no, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Do it.
Thank you. Anybody read the minutes?
Make motion to approve, second motion.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Pose likewise. Planned agenda items, variance request to live in existing structure while constructing new home on property. Affleck, property owner Edward DeBoer, tax map zero three eight, parcel zero one four point zero one, located three nine, three three nine nine nine, Highway seventy-two north, A-one Agriculture Forestry District, District Four.
Yes, I'm Edward DeBoer, um, we're looking to build a new home, uh, we have a barn there now, which, because we only have a quarter section of a living quarters, um, the fact that it was set up as a dwelling before we, we moved there, uh, it restricted us from pulling a building permit to build our home, so we're asking if we can build this home, uh, use this, at this dwelling that we currently are living in, and then once we get the house on the final, we'll delete the dwelling site, uh, inside the barn.
And when do you, when do you plan on starting?
Tomorrow. Yeah, and I'm trying to get ahead of the, uh, the builder right now, because we've got two other homes, he said, if I can't get you started within this month, he said, I won't get to you till next year, and I was like, oh, please.
So you're wanting a year?
No, that's how long it's going to take them to, to build.
Well, I'm saying you're wanting a year to do this in, if we give you a year.
That, no, that's on, that's on my contract, and the contract that I signed says that they, they'll have it done within twelve months.
That's what I'm saying, you need a year.
Yeah.
For us to give you a year to live in that barn.
We typically grant these on a time period.
Right.
So it's typically twelve months, so if you need an extended period of time, you just come back before the board, tell us the status, and you could be granted a, a variance to that. But typically, we grant this with a stipulation.
Okay, yeah, you should, I don't, I don't see a problem.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in second, anybody else get anything, you good, Jim?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh, B has requested to withdraw.
D?
B.
B.
Yes, sir.
C, administrative appeal of building commissioners non-issue of non-building permit. Affleck, Sharon Shelton, property owner Sarah Orden, tax map zero six seven, parcel zero eight zero point zero zero, located five eight zero six Caldwell Road, A-one Agriculture Forestry District, District Four. Right here.
We did, we did not issue a permit, if you look at this, this is one acre tract with a dwelling on it, those dotted lines are actually a medical hardship mobile home. Uh, they requested to put another medical hardship mobile home on the property, and we denied the permit application, uh, based on, the other one's been on property for a while, you know, uh, when you read the regs, we have an allowance for that, but I don't know that that reg was set up to have multiple medical hardships. So we did not.
Do you want to table it, or you just want to deny it, or what do we?
Motion's a deny.
Got a motion?
Well, it's more or less to, uh, they are appealing my decision, you can uphold, uphold my decision.
Got a motion in second, anybody else get anything, all in favor, say aye. Pose likewise. Administrative review to conduct heavy equipment repair in C-one zoning, Affleck Truman Equipment, property owner, Purpose Transport, Davis Ferry Road, tax map zero four two, parcel zero six three point zero zero six, C-one Rule Center District, District One.
Hey, how's it going? We're under contract on this property, just want to make sure we can use it for heavy further repair.
Mr. Chairman, I think if we look at this, this is the old Curtis Equipment property.
Correct.
And I think, I think within the past twenty-four, thirty-six months, we had a same request that we denied for multiple reasons of the rating of the road to the structure, the use of the building, so not necessarily that this, these folks and these gentlemen don't have a good case to present tonight, I'd like to hear what they have to say. We just have to make sure that, uh, legality wise, we don't, we don't approve something for you that we just deny for the same property owner. I think Purpose Transport's actually the ones that come to us last time.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we just need to make sure we're not creating a double standard and, and not holding the same accountability for both parcels, so. And I would be interested to see what you've got, what you're going to do, and, and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we're currently, we have a business in Knoxville that is our main place, that we do business out, we're just looking for a shop to basically, uh, house our long-term repairs that take a long time, that need a shop to, to be in, so we use this property to bring, machines to that have major repairs that are needed and, uh, to repair them here in the shop.
Jim would have to tell the story, but I think the last request on the same parcel was they were the over, uh, over-the-road truck company, and they just wanted to bring their fleet truck in randomly, wasn't really going to park there and just service the shop there, so I, I kind of think there might be a myriad request here.
Yeah, and, and this Jim came to my office and was talking to me, it's on C-one, and we allow service stations and automotive repair, excluding auto body repair in C-one. The C-one is a Rule Center District, you know, I pictured as being in more rural areas of the county to where you might have a small repair garage because people don't want to travel twenty-five, thirty minutes into the city to have their vehicle repaired, same with small grocery store. So the question come up is equipment repair the same as automotive repair? And after our conversation in the C-two, we have, uh, repair services except vehicle or equipment repair, and then you go over into the special exception in the C-two where it allows that type of activity. My personal opinion that automotive repair in C-one is not the same as a, an equipment repair establishment, and that's why we're here tonight is to basically say, hey, am I interpreting that correctly, do you agree, or would y'all agree that it is similar and should be allowed?
So.
Sounds like it needs to change its zoning.
That's what I was going to ask.
Correct, and that's what happened last time.
Even the previous owner as well.
The previous owner tried to change their zoning to C-two and was denied. Or the current one, I guess.
I think we denied it before, we should deny it again. So that would be my, my motion.
And there's a, we had a huge, quite a few people in, in opposition.
I actually think it was standing room only.
Yeah.
On the last one.
Was that because it was a trucking company, or?
I, I think it was because all the neighbors wanted to try to stop the use that it had experienced in the past with no special exceptions, and so it was held kind of a little bit more to the actual code. I mean, I'm, I'm ad-libbing here, but I, I think that was part of it, but.
Traffic on Davis Ferry Road too was in question.
I, I think the goal probably is, is if it's going to continue to be requested to use that parcel for that set purpose, let's figure out from a codes office and, and from the property owner, what's the best way to reach that, that milestone?
Well, if y'all, like, I guess if y'all would agree or do agree that a service station and automotive repair is not really, is, is the allowable use, that's not an equipment repair. So really, equipment, uh, per, repair does not fit in a zoning district, if that's the case, then, then they wouldn't be able to conduct that activity at this location. And, uh, you know, the C-two was denied at this time, uh, so the use of that property would just need to fall in line with what the C-two zoning district, or C-one allows.
I, I just, I'm just curious, like, that size of shop, I don't know what else in that zoning it would fall into, I mean, it's way too big for automotive or, or a few of the other things that were listed, I mean, it's a huge equipment shop. If that makes sense.
I think regardless of size, it's still held to the code.
Yeah, once a, once a non-conform use is discontinued for a period of time, then it's required to be brought into compliance with the zone.
Got a motion?
Let me say it.
What was the motion to the, to that?
I'll, I'll second.
That was seconded.
Got a motion in the second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose likewise. E, administrative appeal for two dwellings on property, property owner Fauve O'Dick.
D, yes, sir.
Tax map zero five zero, parcel one eight six point zero zero, located one two two five Davis Ferry Road, A-two Rule Residential District, District One.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Jenkins.
How are you?
Good, thank you, um, so my wife and I are requesting, uh, to be rezoned or variance to allow us to, to keep our property assets, when, when we purchased it in, uh, twenty thirteen. When, when we purchased it in, uh, twenty thirteen, we looked for something that could eventually be used to keep my ancient parents or her ancient parents. There were other properties at the time, uh, for sale in Loudoun with, with a guest house or an auxiliary dwelling. We chose this one because it was more affordable. They were both in poor condition. We moved in, I pulled permits to build, uh, the addition on the larger structure. And, uh, that's what we live in now. During COVID, I remodeled, uh, the little dwelling, the little house behind our, our house and, uh, it's forty feet for my son to live in with his wife, uh, because properties were hard to come by at, at an affordable price. So, um, makes sense, moved out. From what I understand, nineteen eighty-three, on the tax records listed both dwellings, um, the tax records. And it was actually the first dwelling built before nineteen seventy-one. Not the main house. It was, it was the little house. So we're asking for some variant, some exception where, where you would allow us to keep our property as is without subdividing.
What's the current use of the accessory house?
Currently, after my son and his wife moved out, they, they also lived in Loudoun up until seventy-two. Currently, we Airbnb it. Our plan is to have my wife's parents, who live in downtown Loudoun, they're in their early nineties, late, late eighties, and, um, they'll soon have to, we'll, we'll have to look after them.
How big is that piece of property?
It's four hundred and eighty square feet. It's, it's just.
Property, how, how many acres?
Oh, six acres.
Six acres.
Yes, sir. And, uh.
Configuration before it can be subdivided easily?
They're, they're tied in. The, the cectics are, are tied in.
Yeah, but what about, what about distance?
It's, uh, it's just over forty feet behind Loudoun.
Okay.
Is there a reason now that after all these years, it's, it's brought to the radar?
They are here again to, as administrative appeal to a letter they sent as a notice of violation of the property. Uh, it was brought to our attention, the second dwelling, uh, has been, I'll call it renovated for the sake of the matter. You know, in searching back through the tax records, there was an old dwelling noted. It says old house on the tax records. It had a two hundred dollar value. So that basically tells you where it was. It's been converted and turned into a dwelling at this point in time. It was brought to our attention by the property assessor's office. So we now have two dwellings on the parcel. The parcel's not a lot of record. Therefore, you're only allowed one dwelling per parcel.
Being used for profit as well with Airbnb.
And there was no, there was no building permits obtained before renovations of the structure. If a permit would have been obtained, they would have been informed at that time, you couldn't do it.
And I, I didn't intentionally not pull a permit. I was just unaware that for remodel jobs. You know, I, I'm from Chicago. A very consensus is it's a very heavily regulated place. They're not easy to deal with. And I, I renovated a home in Chicago, sold it, passed inspection. Um, I renovated two homes in Farragut and I just didn't know. I didn't.
Did I understand you say earlier that you had to permit for your main house?
For when we, when we, because it was an addition. We built the addition behind, at L's, if you would, uh, zoom in.
How did you not know to get a permit for the remodeling house?
Well, because it, it was, it was, it was remodeled. It was COVID. Everybody was freaking out. We were, we were, everybody was told social distancing, this and that. So we, we was ready. I'm, um, I, I, I wasn't.
So ultimately, it's just survey it, s- you know, replat it. It used to own both parcels. You just don't wanna go through the process of survey, survey to legalize it.
I don't believe he has the room between the two structures to create a legal survey.
To violations.
It's forty feet off away from the other structure.
But if it, but aside from that, he's got six acres and so as far as being able to move that, cut off us, you know.
He could cut off.
He could cut off an acre.
Move that house.
Yeah, he could move the house or do an addition, you know, or do something different.
Just legalize it on paper with branch request.
How, how do we do that?
It's also, you're just gonna have a surveyor draw your lines there to bust it into two parcels. But as far as you own both, it's, it's just, you're legalizing it on paper.
But then you have to, you'll have to move the little house. You'll have to move the little house to, you'll have to move the little house to your one acre lot.
Yeah. You, you, I, I, just like the gentleman that came in here a minute ago, wanted to live, somebody had created a house inside of a barn. And he wants to live in that barn until he can get his house built. And then he said, I will remove, you know, the living quarters from it, so it's no longer, you know, so that barn is no longer a living thing. So he wouldn't have two houses on one piece of property. So.
The letter that we received from, uh, the planning and code said that according to the code, the house cannot be erected. These houses have been there. We did not erect anything. Then they were there. The little house has been there before, uh, uh, pre-nineteen seventy.
But it was unlivable, correct, Jim?
Property assessor had it at a two hundred dollar value.
Where are you?
It was still considered a dwelling in nineteen eighty-three. I mean, nineteen eighty-three, what was an acre in Loudoun?
So what's our options to try to help? There are no options.
Right now, they're here at administrative view. I've given, uh, we've given a notice of violations. So they're appealing, uh, a letter, notice of violation. Again, it's less anything else. It's either we're not interpreting the regulations right or not. And they're not in violation or they are in violation. If they're in violation, then it's a matter of doing what we need to do to prevent it. Think correct of action.
If we're just going based on the wording of the letters, you said it cannot be placed there or it cannot be erected. You said both of those. We did neither one. They were already there. We did not place anything.
I believe that section of the letter is probably coming out of the building. The code list says you should not erect, repair, alter without, with, without a building permit. That's what that was referring to. So you asked for segments of all the zoning and codes applicable in the letter in writing. And I did that for you so you could try to look through these and understand what I was giving you based on our phone conversations. That's merely, that, that segment of the letter is just describing that you were supposed to have building permits for what you did on to that, what you did on that structure.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I think that, uh, that, you know, this is a slippery slope, but this is an Airbnb and it is a beautiful Airbnb on there. I, I love it.
I feel like that that's the issue here. I think that the.
No, it is, it is not the issue. It is not the issue. It is two houses on one piece of property and it, that is.
Well, the tax assessor came out in twenty twenty-three when it had already been remodeled, when our son was living there. And there was no complaint. The complaint came after it became an Airbnb, so it.
It would, it would be, it, it, as far as I'm concerned, it'd still be the same. It's two houses, just, just like we, somebody would put three houses on one lot and it was denied.
It was already, the houses were already there.
No, it's, it, it, there's a medical hardship case and that's on file. I, I think this is a slippery slope that we go down and proving this and having somebody, somebody erect, uh, you know, there's an Airbnb on a property and, and, you know, like in another location and all of a sudden it falls through. I, I, I would, I would move that we, uh,
Well, we found several.
I would move that we approve of the, of the administrative review as, as it was sent out.
We found several properties in Loudoun County that have guest houses on the property listed, but on the listing.
Turn them in. Turn them in.
It, it doesn't make it right.
Is that really what you want? That you really want people turning each other in?
Somebody turns you in.
I know.
We got a motion to.
I'll second that.
Got a motion. Anybody else?
Explain what that motion is for.
Well, that, my motion is to uphold what Jim, that, that this, that this, uh, uphold the letter that this is, uh, that there, that the letter was correct, that they are in violation.
Reach all those law lines.
They've got six acres. I think that they have plenty of, plenty of ways to solve this.
I don't think you understand. It's literally in our backyard.
That's what I'm saying. You gotta move it.
You, you.
You gotta move it. You can, you can survey it off an acre lot.
It is the original house on the property.
We ain't getting into that. It's not. It was a shed or a dump or something.
No, we have, we have people who know.
Why didn't you get a building permit to remodel it? You did for your main house. You did for your main house, didn't you?
The main house that we, we added, we added.
You remodeled it, right?
We added square footage.
We added square footage.
And you remodeled the little house.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you get a permit to do that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. We're good. Anybody else got anything to say? Pat, you got anything to say?
No.
Got any more announcements, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Second, Jerry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I do have one question. Today, it's a.